Our committee of the whole meeting for October 21st, 2014. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erns?
Here.
Camerer?
Here.
Carbonero?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item on our agenda for the committee meeting this evening is under planning and zoning. Trustee Camerer.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening we have the CVS on the southeast corner of Illinois Route 59 and Army Trail Road. Petitioner Larry Cohen, attorney for Highland Park CVS LLC, and the subject property is 1099 West Army Trail Road. The request is for a special use permit of packaged liquor sales, beer, wine, and liquor. I think Jim has some information. Is there anything else you want to bring to our attention?
It's a pretty straightforward. Trustee Camerer, CVS as their companion store and as the Walgreens Pharmacy in Bartlett would want to get the full package liquor sales. This store had not applied for it when the other two did, and so now they're applying for it, and they're here if you have any questions for them, or otherwise they're ready to move on to plan commission.
Any discussion or questions by the board?
Is this the same liquor license that we've granted because this is CVS in town?
Yes, it would be.
Well, if there's no questions by the board, then I would suggest that we move this on to the plan commission for review.
Thank you.
And that is all I have under planning and zoning.
Thank you, Chairman Camerer. Next for the committee meeting, we committee agenda, we have finance and golf committee chaired by Trustee Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening on finance and golf, we have two incredibly important items. The first item, the 2014 proposed property tax levy and self-insurance presentations. With regards to the proposed property tax levy, I understand that we have a PowerPoint presentation by the staff, so with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you, Trustee Ranky, and in your packets this evening, you have a detailed memo that outlines this property tax levy, and I'd like to go through that memo and some more of the pertinent facts of the tax levy with you this evening. The village levies a property tax essentially for three purposes: to help fund general fund operating expenditures, to pay for principal and interest on our general obligation bonds, and to pay for the village's contribution to the police pension fund. Some of the complexities that come out of this property tax levy is that we are a multi-county municipality, and the levy is based upon a burden factor that the Department of Revenue assesses each county. So the dollar amount that we levy will be broken down into this burden factor, and for 2013, Department of Insurance has verified that Cook County will be 36.58 percent of the burden, DuPage will be 63.23 percent of the burden, and Kane will be 1.9 percent of the burden. So the proposed property tax levy this evening is $9,344,699, and it represents a $141,473 decrease, or 1.49 percent from last year. In the general corporate fund overall, we are proposing to reduce the levy again by $125,000. So that's a reduction now of almost $700,000 in the tax levy that goes to the general fund over the last two years, and that levy in the general fund has stayed flat or decreasing for the last five years. In the police pension fund, our contribution again to the fund, we have a levy of about $1.2 million. It has increased by $67,142 due to the unfunded liability increasing slightly from last year. In the debt service fund, we're proposing to keep that levy virtually flat at $1,688,335. I'd like to briefly go over the timeframe for this levy. Back in April, the village board adopted the budget, and that outlined the dollars that were appropriated for this tax levy. May 1st, our fiscal year began. In the fall of 2014, this kicks off the process and discussion of the tax levy. We'll have a public hearing and approve the tax levy in the fall. These dollars that we levy in December will be collected in Cook from March of 2015 through December of 2015, and in DuPage from June of 2015 through November of 2015. And probably the most important part of this process is that we must have our ordinance filed with each of the county clerk's office by no later than the 4th Tuesday in December, and we are on process to do that. Just going over the debt service levy, we have currently outstanding three general obligation bonds. The total principal to be levied is $1,964,388. Again, we'd like to keep that levy flat. We do have some dollars set aside in our TIF fund, the TIF municipal fund. We get a contribution from the fire department for the '07 bonds, which helped to build that fire department, and we do have money set aside in the debt service fund of about $210,000 to help reduce that. So we'll come back in March and provide abatement ordinances for these two bonds to reduce that levy and keep the dollars flat. Looking at equalized assessed value, probably one of the more difficult things to do is to estimate what EAV will be, because the assessors haven't quite finished up yet, but working with Paul Hines in the DuPage County Clerk's Office, he's estimating that again EAV will probably go down by about 3 percent. In Cook County, last year was the triennial reassessment year. EAV went down by about 9 percent, but typically in the year after that, we don't see much of a decrease. So I am going to estimate that overall will decrease EAV by about 3 percent, and we are now under $1 billion in EAV. Hopefully, this will be the last year that we see decreases, and in future years, it will flatten out or start to increase in value.
Jeff, can I ask you a question? Is there any additional talk about adjusting the EAV to exclude foreclosures? Do you know that?
I haven't heard that. I think at the community meeting that we had...
Yeah, they were talking about that.
I thought Mr. Cullerton was working on that, but no further follow-ups at this Taking a look at our property tax rate, and we'll start in Cook County. Again, at the top of this chart, you can see the burden factor, and that's really the percentage that's applicable to the county of 36.58 percent. Given the levy, the loss allowance, and applying the dollar amount to the burden, Cook County will be assessed $3.5 million of this levy. We're estimating the rate with that 3 percent decrease to be about $1.09 per $100 of EAV, and it comes out to approximately a $0.27 increase in the rate. However, because we are lowering the dollar amount, we should not see an increase if things stay relatively the same in Cook County and the village side.
Jeff, you said $2 point.
You mean... $0.27 per $100.
Thank you.
On the DuPage County side, again, we apply the dollars to our burden. We have EAV of about $605 million, much more in DuPage County. We are estimating a tax rate in DuPage County of about less than a dollar, .98 cents per $100 of EAV. The rate will stay primarily flat if the estimate of EAV stays the same. Now, what hasn't happened yet is we were able to get the burden factor, but the counties of DuPage and Kane County haven't applied the prior year adjustment, and that's the adjustment that we would see for the overvaluation in DuPage County and the undervaluation in Kane County. I think Paul Hines said that he expects to finish that up in December, and that's for that $4 million credit that DuPage should see will come into play. So I do expect when the final tax bills go out that this rate will be lower, because there'll be a prior year adjustment from that error in Kane County last year.
Jeff, do you have any idea as to how much lower?
I don't at this time, because they don't have that finalized.
I think Paul said he would have the final number sometime in mid-November.
Yeah, so I'll call and follow up with him and see what kind of an adjustment we see, and hopefully we can get that and bring that back to the board to see what this estimated rate will look like with that adjustment.
And on these burden factors, what's the change from last year for Cook and DuPage? Do you know? Like 36.58, what was it last year? Do you know?
And I have to get the number of what it was in DuPage. I know that it decreased slightly, but it does, again, it doesn't include the loss allowance from Kane County. I didn't see really a big swing in the...it's less than 1 percent. Overall, taking a look at the entire village estimating EAV, we have a total rate of about $0.94 estimated per $100 of EAV, and a rate increase of about $0.14 based upon the 2013 rate. And again, the total dollars that we're levying are less than what they were the prior year or so. If the EAV would have been flat or increasing, we'd see a rate decrease. One of the things that we wanted to look at is the property tax pie. We looked at DuPage and Cook County to see how our rates stack up against other taxing bodies. In DuPage County, you can see that in the yellow shaded portion there, the village of Bartlett's 8 percent of the total property tax pie. Obviously, a school district makes up the majority of the tax rates in DuPage County. Cook County will see essentially the same thing. The village is 9 percent of the total tax rate compared to all the other taxing districts. Finally, what we want to look at this evening is the rest of the calendar for adopting this tax levy. We'll establish the estimated levy on November 4th, advertise for the public hearing on November 5th, hold a public hearing at the November 18th board meeting. We're set to adopt the levy on December 2nd and file the levy on December 18th, which gives us ample time to make the deadline of the 4th Tuesday in December. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that the board might have.
Any questions from the board? Let me ask you, can you explain with greater specificity why the police pension portion of this year's tax levy increased?
The unfunded liability went up slightly. We did have a couple of police officers that unexpectedly went out on non-duty disability, and that increased the liability in the fund slightly, so that's why we see an increase in that levy amount. But we did adjust that in the general corporate, making sure that the dollars amount that we levy are decreasing.
Just to put a very fine point on it, even though we decrease our property tax levy, rate actually increases because of the decrease in the EAV.
Yes, that's correct.
And we don't have any control over the EAV.
We do not.
Anything further from the board?
I wouldn't say that general residents don't have any control. I mean, they can control...
Right.
They can dispute. We can dispute. You know, you can make sure that they're as accurate as possible.
In EAVs and...
It's not an exact science, EAV. I mean, so there's certainly some leeway there.
Frankly, I'm uncomfortable estimating EAV. I think our rates have been pretty good when they came in based upon the estimate, but it's very difficult to do. One of the things that I will say is all the taxing bodies within the village right now are going through the same process, and if another resident wants to go to another taxing body and take a look at their tax levy process and the dollars that they levy, this is the time to do it.
Yeah.
And we will have a public hearing, and our residents will be able to come and, you know, voice their opinions on the tax levy.
Well, I think it's good that we have decreased our levy by approximately $141,000, and I look forward to working on reducing that further next year. So if there aren't any other questions or comments, we'll move forward.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, item number two is the self-insurance presentations. I know that when we discussed the IPBC program, there was a great inclination by the salesman to rush the process along. Since we are at the committee level, I think it's important to note that we're at the fact-finding stage, so we don't need to make any decisions tonight. You know, hopefully we'll generate a greater understanding of our options and the constraints and the timeline and the process so that we can do what's right for the taxpayers to manage our costs, at the same time make sure the employees are valued and they get good quality health care. So with that, I'll invite...I understand that we have two vendors this evening that would like to talk with us, and the first gentleman standing, he beat you to the punch, is from Sullivan Insurance. Okay, so sir, would you please step forward and give us your presentation?
I'm sorry, I didn't have a PowerPoint prepared available. I'll try to cover all of the numbers. I'm going to try to be as brief and concise on a simple basis to try to explain some complicated matters of self-funding. Oh. Again, I'm Paul Miller with the Sullivan Agency in Bartlett. I've been working with the village for more than the last 24 years on their group health insurance through Blue Cross, and wanted to work through this brief explanation of the self-funded quote that I received from Blue Cross as it would seem appropriate to request as you were reviewing the potential for self-funded quotes, and we may as well work with Blue Cross on this as well. So the first thing I want to do is compare the fully insured with what we would call in self-funding an administrative services only quote, which means they give you the risk of the claims. We're going to also look at the traditional PPO and the HMO look-alike, which are the two plans covered by that quote. We'll look at the numbers, employee choices, and then we're going to look at some impacting factors that impact self-funding and what makes a good prospect for self-funding and what might eliminate somebody, and then some concluding thoughts. We flip to the second page on the comparison of the quotes, and please slow me down if questions come up. Our current, at the top on the left side, we're going to see current premium of the fully insured plan and the renewal premium of the fully insured plan on our classic 12-1 renewal date. We have a traditional PPO plan. We've discussed benefits there before, 250 deductible, 80/20 coinsurance, and some copays. We also have an HMO, which is a completely managed care plan, subject to primary care physicians, and the limitations of self-referral and procedural tests and so forth being approved by your primary care physician. On the administrative services only quote, we're actually comparing a traditional PPO with an HMO look-alike plan, because at this size of group, Blue Cross does not self-fund an HMO plan. The group must be much larger in order to have a quote "self-funded" portion of claims under an HMO contract. With the rates, we see that the total premium for all plans in force, those are PPO and HMO numbers, under the current numbers, $3,315,644. The renewal came in at $3,475,35, or $475,35. That includes the varying rates for the HMO and the PPO. And in that are considered the costs and fees, administrative fees, network access fees, pooling and risk charges, and the three ACCA reinsurance fees, which are, that's the Affordable Care Act implemented most recently. Those fees are included in the numbers at the top of the page and amount to about $112,968 for the current year as we look at the renewal premium. It also includes a number for reserves that the insurance company builds in for fluctuating claims. In the right column, we see what is a recommended equivalent premium presented by Blue Cross of $3,261,857 on a self-funded administrative services only contract. That does not include the ACCA fees or the ACO fees, which are, ACO standing for accountable care organizations, which are also a part of the new Affordable Care Act. Those aren't included because they're technically the responsibility of the insured group and are not paid by Blue Cross but directly paid by the village, so they don't include those numbers. But we see that as we walk down the line here. In a self-funded quote, we look at costs and fees, administrative fees, network access fees, and then stop-loss premiums for both specific and an aggregate. Only two ACCA fees are required for reinsurance, or those two reinsurance fees under a self-funded plan, and that drops those fees down to about $24,000 a year, but again, not included in that $3,261. ACO fees, accountable care organizations, the idea there was to bend the cost curve down with health care in that providers are rewarded for outcomes as opposed to frequency of procedure, and so they're actually, even if in the PPO, run through something of a managed care for those people with chronic conditions or high claims, and the fee is $1 to $6 a month for people actually being administered under that ACO plan. Another topic of self-funding is immature and mature claims. If we to begin to self-fund a plan on December 1st, the claims that would come into the insurance company in December and January that were incurred in October and November are paid by the old contract. So in December and January, Blue Cross wouldn't expect to see any claims from employees of the village of Bartlett, because claims incurred in December won't show up until January, February. So they call that an immature year, and we'd actually be looking at maybe just 10 months of claims instead of 12 months. Now, that will catch up to us in the subsequent year, but when we're looking at numbers in a first-year self-funded quote, one of the factors in having a lower number. When we look at self-funding, we have the set fees to administer claims, the set premiums for stop-loss coverages, and then a projected amount of claims. If the claims are less, you pay less. If the claims are higher, you pay more, but no more than the aggregate stop-loss, which is typically, and is in this contract, 125 percent of projected claims. What does that mean? You could save money, but you could also spend more money if you have a bad year. So they project total cost with immature claims of $3,674,54. Projected total maximum liability at the 125 percent maximum claim number would be Some footnotes at the bottom with the ACO for administrative services only. ACCA is the Patient Protection Affordable Care Act, and then the accountable care organization. Also in the footnote of the caveats to the quote mentions that if enrollment changes either by plan or in total or family, single, mixed, by more than 10 percent, at any time during the plan year, they can adjust the rates. Thoughts or questions? Okay, the second page. This is a review of past years, and when they generate a renewal, they look at claims of the past year, blend that experience with their standard book rate, and it's kind of the analogy is flipping a coin. If you have flipped it 10 times, you could have seven heads and three tails. If you flip it 20,000 times, you're going to get closer to 50/50. So with a group that's only 160 lives, they can't look at average claims generated over a year and say that has a lot of credibility. It could vary tremendously. But when they look at their entire block of business, which is 100,000s of employees insured, they have what they call a manual rate, which would be the average. And so the two things we're comparing here are, in the first at the top, actual versus projected claims. In 2014, for example, the PPO experienced claims 12 percent higher than was projected in the renewal for that year. Also on the HMO side, 12 percent higher. In 2013, they were 10.7 percent less, and we see the numbers, 2012 on the PPO, 7 and 1/2 less, or I should say 7 and 1/2 higher. 2011, it was 19.3 lower. 2009, it was 23.5 percent higher. '08, 8 percent lower. On the HMO, you know, the numbers that jump out, you know, 35 percent higher in '08, 30 percent lower in '09. With the comment at the bottom, fluctuations are mitigated by reserves built into fully insured plans by the carrier. Self-funded plans experience a more direct impact of those fluctuations. Blend that experience versus the manual rate. This is what do our employees in the PPO or the HMO, what's the nature of their claims generation versus the standard? And we can see for every year, since 2014 to 2008, the extremely high level of utilization in the PPO above the standard numbers. And we look at the HMO, it's almost the opposite. It appears they've done a very good job of controlling claims through that managed care plan, in that the average is significantly less than the normal. And so the footnotes, "The current HMO is true managed care plan using primary care physicians and a referral system in a smaller network of providers that manages access to specialist providers, tests, and procedures." Again, the primary care physician has to recommend it. Providers in the reduced HMO network also have lower claims reimbursements, and the current HMO premiums and contribution levels are, from the village, the rates and the contribution level are lower than the current PPO plan. With the HMO look-alike plan, as it mentioned, it utilizes the full PPO network without the restrictions of managed care. So, you know, a revision of premiums and contributions would be necessary for what would be the new HMO look-alike with a zero deductible in competition with a PPO with a 250 deductible. And so, you know, migration to the new HMO look-alike plan could have a dramatic impact on the numbers as well as releasing that managed care of claims for those people in the HMO. Thoughts, comments on that page? I do have, by the way, copies of, you know, the complete renewal proposals for both the contracts that I'm talking about, but didn't want to go through those line by line and put you all to sleep. Bottom line is concluding thoughts, and that is self-funding for groups has potential to save and also increase costs, and I believe that's the case in the village. And professionally would not recommend the village pursue self-funding at this particular renewal. Valerie and her team and I have gone through a number of the options of the current PPO and HMO plans to find those options and benefits that are most, you know, cost-effective at reducing costs and still staying within the, if you want to say, you know, parameters of the employment contracts that are currently in force. But we also want to make those changes to help motivate the employees to access care at the proper level in the health care system, and are also committed to educating, you know, an educational program to develop the employees... know, an educational program to develop the employees to be better consumers of healthcare, with, of course, the goal of being, you know, reduced cost and more predictable claims for the potential to perhaps transition to self-funding at some point in the future. The other items are simply a history that I have of working with the Village.
Yes.
Questions?
I'm curious about what you're building, how you're building your numbers around the policy with regards to the deductible for the employees. Isn't it possible that the rates could be less yet? We're talking about a $250 deductible PPO for the employees of the Village? Is that what I'm reading? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's the current plan for those current and renewal numbers in the left column. Correct if I'm answering the question.
And the new program would also keep that?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I didn't bring it up. Yes, the PPO and the HMO look-alike would mirror exactly the current benefit plan.
So really, we currently have a $250 deductible for the boys on this plan, and that wouldn't change? Is that what you're telling us?
Correct. We're comparing basically the funding mechanism.
If it was to change, would that potentially give us more cost saving?
Oh, absolutely. And that was my reference to the fact that, you know, Valerie and her team and I have gone through a number of options available to plan changes to locate those that would give us the greatest savings and the greatest impact with, you know, the least amount of disruption yet still being in the parameters of employment contracts, which restrict some of the things we can or cannot do without further negotiation.
Is the difference? I'm sorry, you don't? No, go ahead. I was just curious about that, because I see people on insurance day in, day out. I just have to say that it's a great to be able to have a $250 deductible, but I don't think it's the real world. I don't think that's the way, you know, the real world functions with, it's a rarity anymore for someone to have a $250 deductible. That's all I can say.
And I will agree, but it was my understanding that the purview of this meeting was strictly the self-funded topic.
Yeah. Just to get a second. I'm just curious about how that could change things.
But we have gone through that exercise on the traditional plans, that extent.
Is your comparisons here with how people use HMOs and PPOs, is this a national, or is this just a group numbers?
No, this is the actual experience of claims from the members of the Village.
Does it kind of mirror what happens in all groups?
No, what this tells us is our PPO members have a higher percentage of claims than the average.
I understand the numbers.
And our HMO people have a lower.
I'm just asking you, is that, like, typical across the board in insurance?
No.
Okay.
No. And that's back to the question that Michael has raised, that's part of the plan design in the PPO that Valerie and I and her group are trying to address to moderate and modify access to care and, you know, management of chronic conditions and so forth in the PPO to help bring down those clients. That had been literally identified in the claims reports.
I have a number of questions, and please excuse me if it sounds like cross-examination.
No, no problem.
Please excuse me in advance, but this is pretty important, so I want to make sure that I understand your recommendations. So, page two of the document you provided to us has this chart. On the left side, there's the traditional PPO and HMO, and on the right side, there's the self-funded. So am I to understand that the numbers listed under the left-hand column and the right-hand column, that that would represent ultimately the amount that your proposal would save the Village? I'm trying to get to the bottom line.
We have to subtract one number from another number.
Right.
It would show in a non-guaranteed basis, keeping in mind that the $3,475 is cut in stone.
Okay.
The $3,261,857 is totally ambiguous. That number could end up being 3 million, or it could end up being as high as $3,677,000.
Okay, so then, under your proposal, the proposed quote would save the Village approximately $200,000?
If.
If.
Claims came in at the projection, which is why I added the other numbers of our history, which show that it's not very consistent.
Because they could, those numbers could go up, they could go down, which would mean that we either pay more or we pay less?
Correct.
And I know that there's been a tremendous, and understandably so, tremendous concern among the staff that we're cutting benefits. Under the self-funded plan as depicted on this page two, are we cutting any benefits?
No, again, back to the earlier question. The plans on the current and renewal, fully insured plans, are as they have been and are exactly the same as the benefit structure in the PPO/HMO look-alike combo. You know, part of that recommendation, if I didn't touch on that, was, you know, the whole fact that I think we need to do a better job of creating healthcare consumers, or better healthcare consumers, as far as employees of the Village, before we move to some form of self-funding.
And then, looking at your concluding thoughts, you do not recommend the change to a self-funding plan at this renewal.
Correct.
So this renewal being December 1st.
Correct.
So you don't recommend a self-funding plan at this time?
Correct.
What would change to change your recommendation?
Nothing that I can think of.
Okay.
Because the claims experience is what the claims experience has been, and I don't see, we really haven't had a chance to implement anything that I feel would have any direct impact upon it.
I also note that you indicated that you've adjusted your commission level. So what part of the reduction in your commission goes to that approximately $200,000 in savings? Projected savings?
Actually, the renewal number of the $4,475 is also based on that same reduced commission level. So both plans would be the same.
Well, I have nothing further. Anybody else have questions?
I like to narrow things down to the simplest point for me, because I'm kind of a simple guy. Essentially, what, if I'm understanding everything, and you did a fine job, I'm not saying that you confused me, I'm saying I walked in here confused. Currently, what we're paying is $3,315,644. Same thing, next year will cost $3,475,035. Is that correct?
Correct, without changes.
For about $160,000 increase.
Correct.
As the exact same plan that we've had for a number of years?
Yes.
Okay. The other alternative that you are listing, although not recommending, is for us to self-insure, and that cost could be anywhere from roughly $3.2 million up to as high as nearly $3.7 million, depending on claims experience, I believe is the phrase.
Correct.
Is that correct?
It could be less than the $3.2.
Could it be more than $3.6?
No, it can't be more than the $3.67.
What happens when you go beyond this 125%?
Then the stop-loss coverage goes into effect, and all claims would be paid by the stop-loss carrier.
Okay, so they don't drop you or something?
No, they would get you next year.
And all three of these things, particularly the continuation of last year's policy, to use that phrase, or the self-funded one, are essentially or exactly the same benefits to our employees that they have now. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And this one's more to Valerie. Valerie, I'm assuming based on your decades of experience with our employees, with our village, and with collective bargaining, you have looked and squeezed and found every way within legal means to try and make the policies more financially, or less expensive in general?
Well, I think that's the case, but if board policy changes relative to some of this, we'll make the appropriate changes. As we go to our bargaining units, some of this will come up, and some of it will negotiate. We will negotiate it up or down, depending on what happens, and so that, the answer is yes, but that can be fluent.
So I guess my question is, we've got one contract coming close.
Yes, we do.
Another one's a little further away.
That's correct.
Well, I can't talk too much about that stuff. I think you've answered my question.
And I just footnote this, I mean, this primarily, from my understanding, was, as Mr. Miller pointed out, mostly an informational meeting for the board because of the information that was brought up, the IBPC, and we looked for some additional options, and Mr. Miller has eloquently pointed out what that option would be, and we just, basically, a knowledge gaining effort on the board's part as to what the options are in the ever-changing healthcare system.
Right.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the Bartlett Insurance Group.
Yes, okay, great. Good evening. My name's Kevin Lesh. I am president, managing member of Bartlett Insurance Group. We're located at 804 West Bartlett Road in Bartlett. I am here along with my account executive, Darlene Taylor, and our consultant, Howard Lesh. Grateful for opportunity to be here this evening. We made a decision a while ago to be located in Bartlett. May have something to do with our name, but my father brought us here in 1977. I was raised in Bartlett. 80% of our staff is from Bartlett. Family members own businesses in Bartlett. We support insure many local businesses. Tom Coons, one of our founding members, started Tri-County Insurance in 1979. He's been serving Bartlett area for about 35 years. Our other founding member, Howard Lesh, Star Lake Risk Management, 1987. He's been servicing the Bartlett area for 27 years. In 2000, the two agencies came together and merged and formed Bartlett Insurance Group. Tom has been serving on the planning commission for over 10 years. Howard was on the EDC up until about two years ago, and I myself right now are, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Chamber of Commerce, has some local charities, separate roadery. I know, I know TL, I know you keep trying to get me involved in the roadery, but one day, I'll get to a meeting. I tell you this because I want you to know that it's important for us for the Village to be successful. It's important for it to thrive. The success of the Village has a direct effect on our business, our staff. You know, if they're successful, you're going to bring more businesses, which hopefully we can insure. These are going to attract good employees, and we feel that this is one of our opportunities to help contribute towards their success. Wasn't aware, I thought we were going to be the ones to present self-funded options, and we also were able to obtain quotes from Blue Cross with Shield. So everything that you looked at with Sullivan Agency's presentation is the exact same proposal we have. The only difference is that we are going to be recommending self-funding, and we'll get into why. On the screen is a premium summary of the presentation that we proposed to the Village staff members on Friday. We can compare the current term premium that expires on December 1st of this year and with the renewal premium of the same program. So those are the column on the left and the column on the right. Our program, our proposal, will utilize Blue Cross with Shield as an ASO for the medical. Delta Dental as the administrator for the dental program. Both of those will be self-funded programs, and then the MetLife for life in the accidental death and dismemberment. And of course, that is not a self-funded piece. Our anticipated savings for the first year, based on the current premium, is about $260,000, but based on the renewal premium, which I think was just recommended by Sullivan Agency, is about $425,000. We, we're going to use a slide that we present to a lot of our clients, and Darlene actually teaches classes on this, and this is normally like a two-day class, so I'm going to try to knock it down, but we really believe that, well, we know, the dynamics of a group health plan involve these four, four things, and it's a synergy. It's a constant thing that's going, and this is where all your premiums derive. Okay? You see benefits, and that's what the plan provides, is coverage, the provider, that's the network you're given access to through the plan, administration, how the plan is handled behind the scenes, and funding. All these areas, there's ways to save money. Okay? The one area that we're going to focus in on is the funding area, and that's where the self-funded option comes into play. The other three areas can be, it's kind of a process. You don't get all of it right all at once. You have things like collective bargaining agreements, things that have to be negotiated and planned out. This is what's kind of the elements of the annual group premium. Okay? On the left, you see the conventional premium, where the premium is derived. In the middle, you see what percentage of your annual premium is in each line item. On the right-hand side is the partial self, what we do is partial self-funded, where the premium comes from, and we've crossed out where you're getting your savings. Right off the bat, just like Paul told you, your state taxes and your federal Affordable Care Act, the ACO fees, the insurer fees, those are eliminated in the self-funded plan. So right off the bat, you're saving that. You still have to pay your PCOR fees as well as the reinsurer fees. The rest of the savings come from the ability to recoup your run-in claims and then establishing a reserve. And the reserve comes from your incurred but not reported. All right? It's important to understand that, because what he was talking about, so immediately, come December, all right, he was talking about October, you have your October, November claims. All right? Those are the responsibility of your current Blue Cross plan. All right? Those claims don't necessarily get, they don't get paid until either, you know, February or March. Right off the bat, in December, Blue Cross, if you went to the self-funded plan, Blue Cross will send you a bill, and that bill will be $42,000. $42,000, about $200,000 less than you would be paying if you were still with the conventional insured plan. By limiting those costs, you lower the cost of plan. All right? So when you, the following year, let's go to the following year now. So you have those, again, you have those October, November claims. All right? Again, those claims were accounted for, but they weren't incurred nor were they paid. All right? So you set up a reserve. You have control of your money. All right? You pay the claims as they come in. All right? So yes, he's right, you can go up to that maximum liability of $3.7 million, but you could also fall below, but no matter what, you always have control of that money. What I would like to know is now, over the course of the 25 years, how much money has Blue Cross put in reserves? How much money have they kept and put into the profit load, or how much money have they just kept in the side? You know, we can probably predict that by looking at, you guys have taken not huge increases, to tell you the truth, when you look at the course of, you know, other businesses in the area. And what that tells us is that, you know what, they have a lot of money in reserves there. They've been able to, they've made a lot of bit of profit off of your plan over the course of the last 25 years. All right? Well, let's stop that now. Let's manage that money ourselves. Let's take that money, and you know what, let's put aside, you know, if we have to put aside the $3.4 million or $3.5 million, put that aside, all right, and put it into the bank, you know? We have, here's what we got to pay in premium? Let's put our claims on either side. Let's have control of an account where maybe we make some interest, maybe we reinvest that money. All right? Let's have control of the cash flow. All right? And let's not allow Blue Cross to dictate when that money's paid or where the money The transition to this, it is, to me, is just seamless. The effect on the staff, there's none. All right? We have the same coverages, we have the same networks, we have the same enrollment procedures. All right? The monthly payment is still made to Blue Cross with regards to the medical plan. All right? Again, you would pay the $42,000 and change with regards to the fixed costs. All right? And then there'd be a separate line item for the claims that were incurred the month prior. Blue Cross would pay the claims, and then we'd bill you the next month. All right? The effect on employees, same coverages. All right? Same networks, same out-of-pocket, same co-insurance, again, HMO look-alike. All right? You're actually increasing that benefit because now they don't have to go to a gatekeeper in order to go see a specialist. All right? They don't have to get that referral to go to that doctor to go get an x-ray or to go get an MRI. All right? You've actually increased their benefit. You know, I think what we have to do here, since we're both presenting the same, well, I'm not sure we are presenting the same thing, because we're still saying, let's go with self-funding. We deal with a lot of self-funded clients. We deal with anyone from a two-person group all the way over a few thousand employees. All right? Self-funding always works. It always works. All right? And that $3.7 million that he talked about being the maximum liability, Darlene has run TPAs. She's seen thousands of renewals with regards to self-funded programs. We've We, ourselves as an agency, have been through probably over three hundred renewals on a self-funded basis. We've never seen it get to the maximum liability, never. As long as the underwriters are doing their job, and I would hope that a company that has been with you for twenty-five years knows the expectancy and has predicted the claims expectancy correctly, all right, if they've done their job, we're not going to see it hit that maximum liability, all right? Yes, could you maybe pay a little bit more? There's a potential, I'm not going to lie to you, all right, but there's also the potential to pay a little bit less, but I will tell you that there's going to be years you're going to have bad claims, and there's years you have good claims, all right? But keeping that money and being able to control when you pay that and how you pay it, to me, is very, very important, all right? Our relationship with all these employees is on a broker consultant basis. You'll have a dedicated account manager in our office, as well as continuing to have Blue Cross Blue Shield have their service center. We'll attend committee meetings where benefits are an issue, we'll attend collective bargaining meetings. Our suggestion is actually to form an insurance committee, you know, have us be part of an insurance committee where you have all the governing bodies that are part of this program, have them have a representative there, and let's talk about this, because one big thing that you have to realize is in 2018, there's a Cadillac tax coming, and this program that you guys have right now is going to fall under the Cadillac tax. This is a very, very rich program when you compare it with the rest of the community and the rest of the nation, all right? All you have to do is go online and look up Aon's benefit program, one of the largest companies in the world, look at their benefit program, all right? This is going to fall under the Cadillac tax, and now you're looking at incurring another charge on top of what your plan is come 2018, if we don't do anything about it now. So the time is the plan. When we're talking about having these meetings, the one nice thing about being self-funded is, is that Blue Cross will change the plan midterm, we've already got them to agree to that. So if you have a collective bargaining agreement that happens mid-year, and now come August, we want to change the plan or add different plans, we can do that, you can't really do that with the conventional plan. We talk about cost savings and cost shifting, all right? To us, this plan that we put together, that's cost savings, that's actual savings. The shifting part is maybe kind of taking the costs that are there and pushing on either the employee or somebody else, those are shifting mechanisms. We want to look for cost savings options for you, whether it's an HRA, whether it's wellness programs, whether it's prescription drug rebates. There's a lot of options out there, a lot of options that we have put in place already with a lot of the groups that we have, we serve, and they work, all right? It just takes a dedicated team that we have at our office, all right, to help guide you guys through that. So I will take any questions that you may have, and I may ask my two associates to help me out if I need.
Any questions from the board?
I didn't say that much.
Okay, well, I'll ask you a couple of questions then. You said that the transition is seamless. It seems to me that if you're talking about saving the village between 260 and 400 some thousand dollars, how can that transition possibly be seamless?
Well, you're with Blue, you're staying with Blue Cross. Now, everybody's going to have to get new ID cards, but, you know, you're not changing, you know, you're going to have to have employee benefit meetings, you know, because we're keeping the same benefits, we're keeping the same plans, you know, when we, sometimes when we deal with these groups, you're taking them from, you know, maybe one or two plans to giving them, you know, cafeteria options. In this case, you know, especially with the time constraints, this seems to be a good option, because our plans are the same, we're not changing in that regard, we're just changing probably a policy number and the ID card.
So best-case scenario, under self-funded plan, as you're proposing, we could save $260,000, worst-case scenario, what happens?
Well, best-case scenario, actually, you could probably save more than 260,000.
Four hundred, how many?
You can save more than that, actually, I mean, if your claims, you don't incur any claims, you're not going to be paying them out, and so if nobody goes to the doctor, which I know isn't possible, you know, you don't incur claims. Worst-case scenario, we have to tell you, the maximum liability is 3.7 million dollars, but again, we have never seen that. I mean, we would give you probably less than a point zero-one percent chance of actually getting there, based on the number of renewals that we've seen, and none of them have actually hit that maximum liability.
You mentioned an insurance committee. Can you explain that a little bit more to us? How would that work?
Well, when you have different taxing bodies, or you have different, you know, such as here, so we have, you know, the police department, you have the village staff, you have different people within one organization, one plan, all right? You get representatives from those different groups and have them on an insurance committee to represent their group when it comes to the benefits. And it's really a point of just discussing, hey, let's discuss trend in the, around the nation, let's discuss trend with regards to the health insurance, let's discuss what's happening, you know, how that can affect you, and how can we make a savings, and how can we help you in regards to your benefits plan? Because once you bring everybody together and you get everybody on board, it makes it an easier transition to maybe increase the deductible, because if they can see, hey, here's the exact effect it's going to have, you know, you can get them on board and make everybody part of the solution.
You mentioned that the current Village of Bartlett plan would constitute a Cadillac plan under the Affordable Care Act. In your experience, have you worked with other businesses that have had to make that transition, or are making the transition, to get away from the Cadillac plan?
I might defer to Darlene on this one.
Yeah, actually, over the last few years, most of them have been making the changes because they simply could not afford the premium. Slowly but surely, they're getting down to where they need to be. But historically, municipalities and school districts are still at that Cadillac tax rate, so everybody's starting to work at it slowly but surely now, but everybody's starting now because we don't know what's going to happen in 2018.
So the bottom line is, we have to do something.
Yes, and the sooner the better.
I have nothing further, any other questions from the board?
I have a couple of questions.
This is very thorough.
Go ahead.
So basically, what we're doing is, we're changing who controls the reserves.
Correct.
You mentioned that there were additional premiums for the Cadillac plans, or are there actual fines?
It's considered a tax, which is a fine, essentially.
Very closely.
Well, we actually really don't know, not sure yet. It's three years away, we don't want them to rush on anything.
You might want to check into DuPage County, because I do believe they just received a horrendous fine.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, if we were going to transition to a self-funded plan, how would we do that? How would you recommend that we do that?
Darlene, would you like to come up and explain the process? You don't want to come up? Okay, she doesn't want to come up.
Again, because you're with Blue Cross Blue Shield already, they pretty much will do everything. All they have to do, because it will be self-funded and not a fully insured plan, they have to assign a different policy number to it, therefore, new ID cards. And other than that, there's really nothing else to do. The main thing really would be for the finance department, because they're going to see a different kind of billing now, they're going to be seeing all of the fixed costs on one line item, and then you will get an actual detail of all the different claim costs going forward, and you would just pay one big bill each month.
Will there be a greater administrative burden on the village staff?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
Will there be a greater administrative burden on the village staff?
No, you know, if we would have gone with your typical TPA and a stock loss carrier, yes, then there probably would have been more interaction with the administration staff, but going with Blue Cross Blue Shield, they will handle everything just like they do now. Employees will continue to call Blue Cross Blue Shield if they have problems with their claims, the, I think it's HR, if they have issues, they'll have still their dedicated representative at Blue Cross, and they'll also have me.
Uh-oh. Are you the back dog, is that what you're saying?
Yes, and I used to work at Blue Cross Blue Shield, so I know my ins and outs there too, so.
And just to clarify, for those employees, I'm sure this is, goes without saying, but when you use scary terms like "self-funded," this has nothing to do with an employee funding their own insurance, just so they understand that.
You know, in Mr. Prebenaro, it's really controlling your reserves, controlling the reserve account, and, you know, we can't put enough emphasis on that, how we think that is valuable, and we've actually, I mean, we've seen it, it just, it gives you a little bit more freedom, gives you a little bit more control, and it gives you the ability, I mean, heck, you can gain interest, I mean, think about gaining interest on a million dollars, I mean, that's maybe not as tangible as it was fifteen years ago, but who knows what's going to happen in the future.
Any further questions?
Just a small one. Can you contribute, or compare this to the old universal life, where you actually took the funds from the policy and you put it into an annuity?
It still exists still.
They're still around?
I wouldn't compare it like that.
It's kind of the same thing, though, you're actually taking the reserves and putting them into an investment program.
If that's how you want to compare it, I'll let you do that, you know, I just, again, I'm not sure you have even as much control, because, I mean, this is money that's sitting in your account.
Okay, so that's my account, so that's actually, Jeff's going to have to take care of that.
Well, it depends if he wants to set up a separate account or not.
Okay.
Regarding the Cadillac tax, self-insured or not, that's coming.
Yeah, we believe so, yes.
But my question to you is, whether we self-insure or not?
Yes.
We're going to have to deal with that.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just make a comment relative to the Cadillac tax, we actually have been working on that for a couple of years, as you know. We identified that when it came out, and we made some cuts in April to our plan, and have looked at those dates and have a plan to get there, because certainly, we would never put ourselves in a position of having any fines relative to that. So, that's right, whether it's self-insured or not insured, that's an issue, and it's something that we're aware of and intend to get there before the date.
Thank you.
And my only comment to that is, by doing that, especially in the plan, that, you know, self-funded plan, you're able to do that midterm, you know, we can do that when we need to do it, and we can add more to it, so, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then, in terms of where we go from here, staff, do you have a recommendation as to how we proceed?
Yes, you know, I think what you ought to do is look at the self-insured plans that you have in front of you, all three of them, if you would like to continue to consider IPVC, but certainly these two, perhaps next winter, we've talked a little bit about having, last time we did this, we had a consultant come in who understood those, and I think that that's probably a wise thing to do. I think that this was an important introduction to the whole notion of self-insurance, and I think clearly, some of the options of saving our money are there, and I think we ought to take a step back and look at it very carefully as we move into our next budget season, and see if there aren't some benefits there.
I'm just, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just so we're clear, when you, when we're making these steps to avoid the Cadillac tax, that's going to be something we're going to have to do, no matter what our decisions are from a board.
That's correct.
Yeah, so this is going to be an ongoing discussion over some period of time. One last question, I guess, for the self-insurance, I'm sorry I let you go, Kevin, but everybody always talks about the negative side of it, like the sky is falling side. Now, if, for some reason, our group does extremely well, get into wellness programs, start using rebates, the whole ball of wax, a self-insured environment has some, actually an option to increase benefits over time, because you've got a group that's really on board with what's going on, self-insured, is that accurate?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I just think it's important that people understand that, because if everybody gets on board with that, you can actually, it's not, okay, let's see what, and the Cadillac tax is based on cost of particular, different benefits, correct? So if your, if your group has less cost involved with their overall group health insurance plan, it affords us the opportunity to provide more benefits at a similar cost as a group that's not performing so well. Correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
How long will it take for the consultant to review the plans and get back to us?
I can't answer that.
I'm sorry?
I said I can't answer that, we haven't talked to the consultant, and I really don't know the answer to that.
Okay, but probably not before December the first?
Oh, no.
And that's when we have to make a decision about how we're going to proceed for the next year, is that correct?
Well, that's correct.
Okay.
If we get the self-funded plan put in place by December first, a decision needs to be made by November first.
By November first?
Yes.
And the time frame, sixty days, we need to tell our employees.
Yeah, it seems like that would be difficult, would sheave within the time allotted. I especially like the concept of the committee, because I think the employees, you know, and the other stakeholders need to be involved in what we're going to do benefits-wise, but structurally, you know, funded or, you know, self-funded, or, you know, sort of the conventional system we're using now, you know, we should start the process of analyzing that with a view towards getting that done.
We have a quote, a fully insured quote, based upon the same plan that we have now. That is from January first of 2015 through December of 2015, and that's to give us time for the board to analyze this, and give the employees enough time to enroll, so there is time to discuss this at other committee meetings.
Yeah. So then, at what, perhaps the next committee meeting, you'll be able to come back to us with an idea as to the consultant and the process and the timing, and how we can implement any changes that we see necessary?
A timeframe.
The timeframe.
I'd be happy to do that.
And an outline of the process as well.
Okay.
We could work on that.
We certainly can.
To get there. I think that's important, okay. Well, thank you very much, that's it for finance and golf this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Rankin. Final item on our agenda for the committee meeting is under Public Works Chairman Aaron's.
Thank you. Where's Mr. Burke? Come on up, come on down. Our only agenda item is the downtown traffic study, and I almost assuredly let Mr. Burke go through it in his own inimitable way.
Well, I'll make it very quickly, because I'm going to turn it over to Mike Ziegler from my office. Mike Ziegler is head of our traffic group, Mike Ziegler was the author of the report, Mike's been involved with traffic design for a really long time. One of the important aspects of this site is the fact that you have the railroad and the preemption devices and the other safety features. This is a boundary condition that really restricts the things that you can do. Mike's already made some recommendations as to changing the operation of the system at night, and Mike's also went out there, looked at the cabinet, and found that some of the sensors were not functioning correctly, and changed that, so he's making some recommendations. There's lots of charts and tables in your book, which I can assure you that we will not describe, discuss unless you really want to, so Mike has a quick presentation that he's going to be making today. Just, like I said, Mike's head of the group, and was brought in after the Fox River Grove disaster almost twenty years ago, when the school bus got clipped because of the problems with the traffic signals, so Mike?
I'll find out real quick. Thank you, good evening. I'm going to go over kind of the basics of the traffic study that we prepared. Please stop me during the presentation, if you've got questions, kind of keep it free-flowing. I'll try and be brief, it's about fifteen slides, kind of give you an overview of where we started the process, where we went, once we consulted with staff, and really got into it. I will say, coming into it, and when Bob called me a year ago for the study, I had no preconceived idea of what we were going to really find, which I think is a good thing, we came in with an open mind, to look at essentially all the interactions at what we'll call the CBD, essentially bounded by Western Avenue to the west, North Avenue, Bartow, and then Railroad and Main. We talked about maybe going down to Devond, but I think after we saw the traffic and the interaction, it's important down there, but it seems like it's more intense, particularly around the railroad corner. We'll talk a lot about the railroad, because that kind of drives operations in that area, it has from day one. We've got some history already there, back from 1995, that I'll go through briefly, so I think we have a sense of what's happening there. We've got some recommendations, as Chris mentioned, of additional things we can do, that the village can do on a proactive basis, just like they're doing today. village can do on a proactive basis, just like they're doing today, and have their maintenance contractor go out there. So, with that, background of the evaluation, we started the process just given the winter. We really didn't want to start doing data collection until later in the year, so we held off to around April. We're meeting with the village early in May, or, excuse me, March, to get a sense of what issues that are perceived and real in terms of traffic operations are out there that we need to be aware of. So we met with Valerie and her staff as well, the police department. Along with that, we started to set up assignments as far as data collection. The police were very helpful in two senses. They were gonna do the 24-hour counts, and I'll come to a figure, and it's actually in there too, to kind of get a sense of magnitude of traffic throughout the day in the study area. They also have provided us with all accident data, so there's probably nine charts in there to some nauseum, but I think it gives a sense of, do you really have an accident experience of any concern, or is it just kind of typical given the number of intersections that you have and the traffic passing through? And then we, upon ourselves, had our subconsultant prepare or conduct the manual turning moment counts in there and there as well. So, again, operationally, the focus was the traffic signal just because that's really what drives how traffic moves in there. If that's not operating well, the stop signs will take care of themselves, but if the traffic signal's not functioning correctly, you're gonna have issues. So that kind of got a sense right off the bat of where we were at. The traffic data, you know, showed pretty moderate traffic volumes. There are reasonable volumes for a downtown area such as yours, so you've got good movement and good traffic flow. Generally, we found that the traffic is generally balanced. People may take some exception that there's more traffic on Oak. That's probably true, but generally, people are spread out. You're not at a location where you have, this intersection's at capacity and you can't move. We've, I've driven the intersections, I don't know how many times, during the peak hour, just to get a sense of how traffic is. There's a lot of dynamics down here with the train station. You get the split platform, which really works well, but when the passengers, like from the train, they're everywhere. You know, they scatter like ants, and it is what it is. It works well, but it's another consideration we talked about the police department about in terms of, let's make the public a little bit more well and put out, you know, yield to, or stop for pedestrians in the crosswalks and do it now while the seasons, you know, people are still walking. Pick them up during the winter to allow, you know, for plowing operations, but things like that. That certainly became an issue. Generally, overall, you'll look in the report, we did the synchron analysis or modeling of the traffic, and it shows level services around C, maybe D. That's kind of a grade you get for your traffic, and you're talking about 30 to 40 seconds of delay. When we physically went out there and sat for a couple days, in the morning and the afternoon, the morning still holds true, around 30 seconds, pretty tolerable in the big picture of thing. The evening's a little longer, 50 to 60 seconds. That sounds like a long time, and I'm sure on some streets, like particularly Bartlett, if you're waiting after a preemption, probably is. But on Oak, that moves pretty well. Even after preemption, we tend to clear Oak pretty well, and Railroad Avenue tends to work well as well. Off-peak, when I've been out here, it seems like it works. If the traffic signal is functioning correctly, it seems like it's about as smooth a place as I've ever seen traffic moving with a railroad corner. If you go down to Womat at Green Bay Road or Fox River Grove on US 14 or US 30 down in New Lennox, they have a similar situation with the pre-signals and offset Ts and things like that, and they just don't work as well as your stuff does in off-peak. So, that was kind of, kind of nice to see. In terms of accidents, 64 total over a three-year period. I guess the good news is there's no fatalities and there was no serious injury accidents. I think we had a total of 54 damage or property damage type accident, which we haven't had any train collisions, with the exception at Western, that was a truck that was doing something it should have never been doing. But generally, it's a safe area for traffic and pedestrians. The traffic signals, again, operation, that kind of drives everything. If they're operating correctly, the downtown kind of settles within itself. We obviously talked to the village several times, and as Chris mentioned, I actually came out here. Valerie called and said, something's not right, and she was correct about that. Things were not operating, some sensors were off. It's not that unusual. It's just a maintenance issue. It's a, it's a pretty brutal environment that that operates in between the vibration from the train and just weather. So it's something that we've all talked about, continuing to actively monitor both ourselves and the maintenance contractor. Location map, kind of talked about it. North Avenue was kind of our northern limit, Western, Bartow on the east, and then Railroad and Main. We didn't go as far down as Devon as we initially thought. Roadway network, we talked about. Generally, the roadways function well. Your traffic control devices are in good, good shape. I know the police department has implemented, before our recommendation, some truck restrictions already. So, you know, things have already been proactive. There's just some other steps that we've looked at moving through. Traffic control devices, I would see the signal, and I'll get into that to a little degree because I think it's important to kind of, everyone understand the history of why it operates the way it does. That's not something the village invented. It's something dictated by the ICC, and it comes from, from an incident in 1995. But traffic control devices, you've got the three traffic signalized intersections. They're driven off one controller. So if it goes down, all three go down. You don't have three separate controllers like you typically would. And then you've got stop sign control. We've made some recommendations for additional signage at the stop signs, but generally, they function well. The traffic volumes, if you're looking through that table, you've got basically three numbers. You've got the standard number, and that's the AM peak hour. You've got the numbers in parentheses, that's the PM peak hour, and then you've got the larger number. That's the ADT counts that the police department took. So you get a sense of magnitude of each road's carrying the traffic. So you've got about 9,000 on Railroad, about 7,000 on Oak. North, you're around 3,500 in that area. So you've got, again, moderate traffic volumes and you're not at capacity, which is a good thing, a good thing to have. The crash data, the only thing I'll say about that, it kind of, kind of typical for the area. Your number one type of crash is rear end, and then you have angle, and everything else kind of plays off of that. Just the background, the traffic signals, really, the way the traffic signal functions derives itself from 1995 when the Fox River Grove bus accident happened. When that occurred, ICC took a completely different look at the signalized intersections and how they do it. It was always safety, but now, safety's first. They don't, it's not an issue of what your level of service is or how well your traffic's gonna operate. You can go to Fox River Grove, because we were called in, literally, the day that it happened, to come in and assist the village with that. And IDOT said, along with ICC, we do not care if you get delayed, because now it's split phase and they get protected left-only going into the railroad tracks. So there's, there's a lot of, it's very conservative, is all I'll say. It's very conservative, but it's, it's safety first, and it's hard to fault it for that. But that tends to be the genesis of how those signal at Railroad, Oak, and Main were set up. It was based on those parameters 10 years before that. And yeah, it can be frustrating to go, why is it operating that way? I can do a better job than that. But again, it's ICC basically dictating that's how it is. You've got the pre-signals at Bartlett, and again, that tends to generate different types of sequences. It's a complex sequence. It's not something that's implemented every day. In fact, there's only one controller manufacturer that can do it that's out there. So it's, it's pretty specialized phasing, but that's why it is the way it is. Again, I mentioned, it does impact operations, but again, safety kind of overtakes that. But the village has done a good job of maintaining that and being proactive with the maintenance contractor, and the maintenance contractor that you use is the same maintenance contractor that DuPage County uses, that IDOT uses, that Cook County uses. So they're, they're a well-known, well-known company and very, very capable. Our experience started in 2009 when the village called and said, traffic signal operations are no good out here. So we came out, made some recommendations, and the village implemented them pretty quickly, and I think it helped. It didn't solve all the problems, but it certainly helped. We moved some detectors up closer, tightened the timings up, and got it to be a little bit more efficient in the downtown area. Signal phasing, I'll just go through real quick. For the railroad, it's five phases out there, and you won't see them every time. You have an exclusive PET phase at Oak, which is only activated on one side if the push button is pushed. That's probably a saving grace that's not activated all the time. The main phase will always be Oak, and the reason is, again, ICC, they want the tracks clear at all times. It will be that way for now and forever. I know, I've been out there, and you're sitting on Railroad, and you're like, why don't I have a green light? It's going through a minimum green time on, on Oak, and it has to do that every time. It's gonna be 27 seconds minimum. It just is a function of the timing. We have talked to the village, and Valerie brought this up. We've got some capability to help in the off-peak, because I think that's where some of the frustration comes, to reduce some of the timings on a time-of-day basis. So at 3:00 in the morning, we can get some of the min's and max's times down, so, you know, it kind of turns over. So if there's one car on Oak, it's gonna get its 27 seconds, but then I'm gonna get to Railroad and move that traffic. So we're definitely gonna look at that. And then you have Railroad and Main Street. Preemption, it functions well for Railroad during preemption. It stops Oak, but at least you're moving traffic on Railroad. So a lot of times in a situation, the ICC will require you to preempt everything. You stop everyone, the train goes, and then, and then you continue traffic. So even though it's not the best situation, it certainly isn't the worst, you're moving traffic at all times, and it looks like, from what I've seen on the times that I've been out here, it tends to recover pretty well after preemption. Again, I think the recommendations in the report, there's nothing earth-shattering, unfortunately. You know, continue to monitor traffic signal operations. If there's a problem, contact us, contact MEAD. That's certainly, that's certainly been doing and continue to. We've talked about the time-of-day signal plans that are easy to implement. There's, there's nothing special about that. The controller's already capable. But one thing we did talk about when we came out and looked at it is, I was surprised that there's not a telephone connection to, to the controller. That's typically something the ICC requires. They may just not have done it at this particular time, but that is one thing that could be done, like a telephone. And what that does, it allows remote monitoring of the traffic signal controller. We can actually set up alarms in the cabinet, so it can call out and tell either the maintenance contractor or us or the village to say, hey, I've got a constant call. And that's what the problem was the one time we were out there. Detector was acting bad, so it was calling that phase every time, even though there's no traffic there. And that's when you start to get inefficiency and long times and some frustration by the public. So that's one thing we certainly want to look at. We talked about the portable pedestrian signs, some additional larger no-left turn signs at, at Oneida, and then just across, traffic does not stop. Nothing, again, earth-shattering, but something that just kind of will enhance the traffic operations and traffic safety. The signal operations are comparable to the locations I told you, so they're not horrible, believe it or not. The other locations have a lot more delays just because of what they're dealing with, but similar, similar design. Your traffic moves well. I think the other thing it helps you is you have an abundance of infrastructure, of traffic infrastructure, just in the village alone. You've got state routes, you've got county routes, you've got village routes. So, I mean, it tends to disperse traffic pretty well, so not everyone's concentrating on one, on one area. So I think that's a, that's a benefit. I know there's a little bit of diversion traffic coming down north and western. We see that. In the report, the long-term alternatives, you could sign that no-left turn, but when we talked to the village staff and the police chief was certainly aware of this, if we start to limit traffic and we move it somewhere else, we're gonna probably create problems as opposed to solve them. That's kind of the general sense we got. Traffic seems to be balanced. We don't have a huge cut-through or diverted traffic issue, so that seems to be working out fairly well. Traffic operations are at equilibrium. Things have kind of found their own, their own mass as it's gone through in their, in their own ways. So people tend to know how to get through the village. I think it operates very well. Your downtown is dynamic, and certainly the train station is part of that. But I think all in all, you've got a good infrastructure base, and I think the traffic operations are reasonable for, for this type of area. So on that, I will open it up to questions and comments.
Any comments?
Isn't some of the implement time-of-day signal timing plans already been changed?
No, we have not done that yet.
Okay. Because I, I distinctly noticed a difference at some point a couple weeks ago.
Good or bad?
It was good, yeah, because I pulled up.
That was us.
Yeah. Yeah, something wasn't responding, and this time I went up, pulled up. Typically, I would be waiting there, right? I think it was, I don't know the exact location. I think I was going northbound on Main Street, trying to turn left on the railroad, and it changed like that.
And that's how it should be. And that's why I continue the proactive maintenance. And some things, it's, it's traffic signals and things sometimes get out of, out of kilter, just any location, not just the railroad location. But I think being on top of that and reacting quicker and sooner, again, tends to reduce the frustration of the traveling public.
Absolutely. Some of it's just awareness.
Exactly.
The street that I live on, the light has been not functioning the way it should function for 10 years, as far as I know. And the DuPage traffic engineer came over, went into the box, flipped a couple of switches, and all of a sudden, I don't wait at 7:00 at night. I'm not waiting for the whole cycle. So, yeah, we need to be cognizant of checking those wait times.
Well, and one of the really critical part of this recommendation that Michael had raised is getting some phone lines in that box so that we're able to understand when it's not functioning, and we don't have them. We got an estimate for that, and I think it's $10,000. We had an estimate yesterday.
Send the bill to DuPage.
Pardon?
Send the bill to DuPage.
Yeah, well, we'll take a crack at that.
I have a phone line. I'll call up the next time it's not working.
Certainly, I think we should do that so that we're not having those prolonged problems that we're not aware of.
Yeah.
I'd say one thing about that. The cost isn't just for the phone line. The phone line is probably $1,500 and the conduit there. The other thing that we have to do to that is put a new controller in there that can actually dial out. That's the bulk of the cost. But if you think about it, it's a good thing because you're gonna be proactive, because the controller in there now is not gonna last forever. It's been in there 10 years. Eventually, the manufacturers stop supporting those controllers. They'll start selling a new model, and if it goes down, you're gonna have to try and find someone who's got one. Hopefully, me does. But if you, if you go with the phone line now, you kind of do two things. If you're proactive, you've already got a new controller in there. That'll be good for another 15 years, plus the phone line as well.
Anything else? Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, excuse me, sir.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The traffic study was actually a visualization of the traffic that was there. You saw what was going on.
Yes.
I'm just wondering what would happen if we closed off Devon and redid the study? Because 60% of the people do not drive downtown. They'll go around Devon and miss the entire downtown area, which is part of the problem. Trusty Governor, I didn't hear your suggestion. What was it? Shut down Devon and redo this, redo the study. Shut down Devon?
I'm not sure what you're suggesting.
Is everybody, does anybody in here actually drive through downtown?
Yeah, sure.
You do? I don't. I cut through Devon like everybody else does.
And go to West Bartlett Road?
Right, because Devon was not even part of the study. So we're not even, we're not even seeing how much traffic is actually being diverted from downtown.
There's no problem.
What's, what's the question? The question is, is, well, we looked at the downtown area. We added North Avenue, but we didn't really look at what traffic was going down Devon. We're not looking at the traffic going down?
But there's no problem at Devon. If you close that down, there's gonna be tons more traffic downtown.
My point.
Well, you're creating a worser prob.
That's a real word, worser, but you're craving, you're adding. I'm just wondering why it wasn't part of the study.
I think, again, when, when we started, we talked about Devon, but the focus, and maybe it just be my tendency as a traffic engineer, we started to look at the downtown when the traffic is most intense.
Anything else?
No.
No? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't know where we go from here. Well, I think you ought to, if you're comfortable with all of these recommendations, and staff's gone through them, and I think they all make some sense, and some are big and some are little, and I think you should direct the staff to implement the recommendations in this study.
I don't see any cost in any of them, really.
No, there, there isn't. There's the phone lines we talked about and, and having some larger signs in some areas, and a couple of these portable pedestrian signs. It really is not, and then there's some follow-up relative to the time-of-day changes that we're gonna keep our eye on. But you're right, Mayor, there, there's not a lot of significant costs.
And then when they are implemented, you can let us know, and we can all go drive down through at different times of the day and do our own test.
That's exactly right, and I'll do that.
I thought you said that we would need a new controller.
I'm not so sure I like the increase in signage. Every time we put
Every time we put new signage up, it, oh, I wish I could find it right where, it, it garbages up the landscape.
Clutters.
Clutters, thank you very much, I appreciate that. It clutters, it clutters everything up. I mean, how, how, oh, I shouldn't say this. How, how, how do we accommodate the people who cannot think for themselves in traffic situations? I don't know how else to put it, except, we have so many signs now. I, that, that troubles me. I wish we could find a way to get around that.
Around the larger sign we're talking about, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Pedestrian signs and.
Pedestrian signs and.
I didn't see, I didn't understand the, the true purpose of that either.
Directional signs. I mean, if you have a driver's license, you should be able to figure some of this stuff out.
Is that a rhetorical comment?
Just a comment, no big deal. That concludes the public works portion of the committee agenda.
Okay, and just, just for clearer, more clarity on the direction, I think it would[1773.52]